Good evening and welcome to the November 20th, 2025 council work session beginning at 6:30 PM. Before we start, I think I want to give you guys an update. Mr. Nichols, am I correct that no, no forward plans have been made with the data center at all, as far as the city knows?
So what I can tell you is the city has received preliminary site plans that they plan to bring forth to Planning Commission in the next month or so.
Okay.
However, there still has to be an internal review before that goes to Planning Commission to make sure that they have met the requirements per our zoning code.
Okay. All right. And with that, I'll open it up to public comments. So this is a public comment for, we noticed a lot of people were sitting here through the work session and then into the council meeting to make a comment. So if you'd like to make a comment during this time, it'll be in work session and you're free to, to go.
Anybody want to go first?
Go ahead.
Please not be worried by the long page. It's not as much as it seems. Hi again, Carl Hahn. I was actually looking through the City of Trenton's webpage and I came across the vision and the mission. I'm not sure if this council wrote it, but I'd like to know if you plan on enforcing it. So City of Trenton's vision is serving honestly, professionally, and with integrity while proactively providing the best quality of life, expanding responsibly, and maximizing existing infrastructure. And my question to the council is how do the recent actions of the city leadership provide the best quality of life for us? We're not talking about one source. I hope that we are mature enough and transparent enough at this time to at least be able to say and recognize that a data center is coming in or intends to come in. It seemed a little ridiculous on the last meeting that that was even in question. I mean, we're batting around silly ideas when we know multiple sources have this coming here. So with all the studies on air pollution, noise pollution, stress on our infrastructure, right now they're saying the average utility price goes up about 12% in the state of Ohio for your utilities. How is this, Mr. Mayor? How is this improving our quality of life?
So I'm, I'm not going to speak if it goes up, but I will tell you this, we checked into it before and I've looked at many things. Regardless of where the data center goes in the Duke network, that's going to be the percentage bill is going to go up. So regardless of where Duke would have put this, even if they would have put it in, let's say Northern Kentucky that our center down there runs, your bill will go up 12%. They spread the bill out amongst everyone. So when I looked into that, that's what I saw. Whether, whether a data center goes into the City of Trenton, I don't know what Lebanon's on, but if it goes into the city of Lebanon, if it goes in a farm field in the middle of the township, that's what's going to happen. There's, there's no avoiding that when it comes to the cost going up.
With regard to Trenton's mission, perform responsibly and proactively to provide excellent services. So here's the word responsibly again. My question to you is, and I know that members of the council like to laugh at Trenton Talk on Facebook and they said it's only 150 people. We have over 300 people that have already participated in a poll that my wife put up and right now it's 92% of the people are against this. So that, that makes me wonder, are you out of touch with your community or are you not listening to your community? 92% is staggering. Maybe it's a small sample size right now. Let it continue. We are not in favor of this. We're, we're trying everything we can to tell you we're not in favor of this. So my last question to you, because I don't think there's a good answer to the last one, is the city prepared to stop this process, obtain further insight into the opinions of its citizens, and act responsibly in the best interest of its citizens? Because we're telling you, you're not acting in our best interest.
I will, I will tell you this. I have talked to a lot of people. I'm in the community a whole lot. I have gotten a lot of positive as well. So I understand what you guys are saying, but I was at the moose Saturday night, numerous people apologized. They said now that once we've got, we've got the feeling of what's going to happen, that we're for it. I even, I, I'll be honest with you, I even have messages from people that are still on Facebook calling me names that say, "I talked to the city and I'm for this now." So I understand what you're saying.
To a vote, would you let us vote on this? Because I don't think you can cover a majority. I'm glad you're shaking hands and I'm glad you're out there with the people.
I would like to bring something up. You know how many residents is in Trenton?
I believe it's 14,000.
You better go on up.
Okay.
And you got, what, 900 you said? Let's take a look at the percentage.
I actually said 300 and I realize it's a small sample size and I'm willing to look at certain results, but I, I don't see it shifting that much to where you have a majority.
I, look, I understand what you're saying, but if you look in the options are, when a company comes to you and says, "We want to work with you, but if not, we're under contract right outside," your electric bill's already going to go up regardless of where they put it. And then you're also, we're also not going to be able to sell them water. We're not going to be able to charge them for sewer.
Income tax.
And income tax and property tax, but all of it is right on the other side of the tree line. I understand what you're saying and believe me, I knew when I made this decision, it wasn't going to be a popular decision. I would have, to tell you guys the truth, I would have much rather said no, but knowing what I know about the plans and the contracts that people are in, it would be irresponsible of me to do so because I understand what you're saying, but moving it 100 feet at most.
So will you take the lessons that you've learned here as you try and run for state representative and be able to stop this from happening elsewhere? Would you be in favor of it?
I want to, I don't like to use this as my public forum, but to be honest with you, that's what I stand for 100% as a state rep. The reason I'm running is because I think the state takes too much away from the local communities. So if you look at the state budget, you look what they're dealing with year to year, you look at the decisions they're making. I read an article where in Columbus now, and I think I sent it to some people, the community said no to a data center power plant with experimental fuel cell and the state said, "No, we have the right to tell you this is going here." I'm not in favor of that at all. To be honest with you, I'm not pro or against data center. I'm pro people in the councils in that community deciding, and that's what I want to happen. I'm not for Columbus forcing something to go into an area. So I would be a change of the status quo of what it is to get more local control.
Well, the second, there's 99 in it. There's 99, just like up here, there's seven votes up here. He's one, I'm one, she's one, Ray's one, one of seven. So there's a percentage there that adds up that you gotta have more or less of form. I mean, not a form.
But I feel like we need a fighter for us, not a traffic cop. And I just feel like we're sitting back saying, "It's coming anyway." Okay? And what you have up front in a lot of cases with these data centers is not what you're going to end up with because now they're going to add their battery cells and you're going to have no control over it. And I don't, again, I don't see where a passive attitude towards this if, again, if this is not in the majority of the people's interests. And I would like to see the council, the city do more to understand, and I understand what you're saying and that you've been out and I know you're busy. I appreciate that. I'm just saying, there's no way you guys have an accurate feed on this? No way.
I don't, I honestly don't think there's any way to get an accurate feed because like I said, there are, there are people that I get told daily are saying terrible things about me on Trenton Talk and then I've got messages saying, "I'm okay with the data center now." And then the next hour they'll post something else back. So what I'm saying is, I don't know that there is an accurate feed of what it is. I wish I had a better feed of what it is, but when you're getting conflicting things, like for instance, I talked about going to the moose. One person, when I went in there on that Saturday night right after this happened, chewed me out so much that they had to have, people from the moose had to come and get that person away. We went to the cake auction and the same person walked up to me and shook my hand and said, "Hey, I understand what you're doing and I understand it all better now. You probably made the right decision. And if you need my help with your campaign, I work for a major company. We send out millions of emails. Just let me know next time and I'll help you in any way you can." So I understand what you're saying, but we're getting this, we're getting both sides of this and I know a lot of people are afraid to speak up. So I, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but it's just, for us, it's very confusing when you go to a place and you get a lot of "I'm sorrys" and "I don't want to say anything" or "I don't want to publicly say anything, but I'm sorry for what I said," or "I'm sorry that I signed the petition," or "I'm sorry I did this or that." And then you get the other side as well.
I'm sorry, I'm not going to waste a lot of time here. I'm going to go ahead and sit down with somebody else who wants to pick them up. You spoke to these, that's all you can do. I appreciate it. They look to you better than any.
But I will say this though, just number one, I credit you. Thank you very much. I'd be open to having a conversation with you separate from this. And then on top of that, we have not gotten, we have preliminary site plans before they talk about any kind of abatements that they might want. We're going to have noise studies, we're going to have some environmental impact studies. The EPA is looking into studies. Butler County is doing studies currently. I mean, we live here, I've lived here my whole life. We're not going to put something that's going to be detrimental to the community in the city.
I'm very blank and shit to go on pretty well. Ryan, two years ago, my mother-in-law had a heart attack. Train crossed the track and we nearly lost her. Thank God for St. Clair. Can't say thank God for Trenton. Thank God for St. Clair. Even though I had to be the one sitting there giving CPR, thank God somebody else was able to make it, Ryan. My wife is sitting home sick right now because she has migraines nearly 25 days out of a month and you're wanting to put sound on top of her that's going to make it even worse and I could lose my wife. If that's what you want to look at the end of face and say, "Well, that's fine," then please do, but that's my wife, okay? That's my wife. Y'all all say y'all love Trenton. We love Trenton too. That's why we're here. We love Trenton. Everyone here says, "We came to Trenton because it was a bedroom community." Ryan, it's not becoming that anymore. We're, we're putting in construction here, construction there. We can't even keep up with the roadways we got. We've asked for studies, y'all told us, "We don't have the studies." If I sell a house, I gotta have studies before I can sell a house. True. If I, or if I want to build a house, I have to have the plans, I have to have the ground part, I have to have all that to build my house.
Yes, not to sell.
But right now, we don't have anything to let them come in. We don't have the sound studies. I've asked y'all about do we have the equipment? We've got a school set right between me and you. Those kids will have to hear that every day, Ryan. Mr. Woodry, Mr. Nichols, Mr. Perry, Ms. Montgomery. And I, I would appreciate you for a second because you're an ordained minister. I've done so myself. God so loved this world, but we love it enough to make people suffer? God would be very upset with us all. He would be upset with me if I wanted to say, "Well, I know it's coming in, but this is the best we can do." If you're going to start, your little child's up against 2,300 feet of that, my wife's just a few more blocks away. God, is that what you really want? I mean, if that's what y'all want, if that's what y'all think is best, I would, I want all seven of you to come down in our neighborhoods and tell us how safe this is, that we're not going to hear the sounds, that we're not going to have the excess traffic, that we are going to have EMS and fire over here if something happens.
I will, I will say to that effect, that is one thing that Matthew and I have been talking about with the money here, that we're talking about in the property tax with the new neighborhood plus what's going on in there. We were looking at the budget for providing two people on one side of the tracks and three on the other. So that we do, we do have coverage.
That the sound's going to be okay for her, that her reaction's going to be okay. Can y'all come down and tell her that? I implore all seven of you to come to my house, talk to my wife and tell her that she won't hear a sound and that she won't get another migraine from it when it comes in. I want all of y'all to promise for that. If y'all can do that, y'all can go to my house and tell my wife that these sounds aren't going to bother her, or you can go to the school and tell the school the sounds aren't going to bother them, then I say, "Let's build this thing." But if y'all can't do that, y'all can't promise that, then I ask you right now, as all seven of you, to stop it. It's going to hurt our residents. Our residents, our residents are important. All 15,121 of us, I think, to be exact, isn't it?
What's that?
15,121?
I just know there's over 15 because the lessons was not correct.
Right.
I'll tell you that right now. It was not.
15,000 is about the closest I can buy. Think about the 15,000. And then when you think about the 15,000, those 15,000 can push you to come on us. Those 15,000 to step in to stop you from going to come on us. And just think of us first. You're here, you're here right now as our mayor. Think of us first. Think about the health impacts and then decide, is the health impacts worth it? The, look at this little child sitting right here. He's up against it closer than I am. Tell Mr. and Ms. Hahn that the sound isn't going to hurt him or the effects of it's not going to hurt him. And then come to my house and tell my wife, if y'all can do that, I'll say, "Fine. This is a great project." If y'all can show it, it's a great project. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll speak. Hello. My name is Tanya and when I hear you say things like, "We don't know what's going to happen," but based on the research we've done, we do know what's going to happen because it's happened in Texas, happened in Georgia, happened in Virginia. It's happened right here in Ohio, over and over and over again, the same thing. People have complained about the crisis of water going in, the crisis of utilities going in, property values going down. That's a huge thing for me because I don't know about anybody else, but for me, most middle-class people, the only thing they have of real value is their homes. Well, this is in my backyard. My home is going to be worth much. In fact, the guy from, the lawyer from Amazon said, "I wouldn't live near a data center. Nobody wants to live near a data center." And you're forcing this in our neighborhood. And that's what irritates me because we weren't asked. I was there first, not the data center. And I should be respected enough by my city council to be asked, "Are you okay with it?" And there's nothing in my research that shows anything is going to be good. And I have no knowledge that anybody's going to be able to fight it. If they break the Norris orders, are you really going to fight them? If this is Amazon, if this is Meta, if this is Google, they're going to come at you with 25 lawyers and bury you. And so I don't believe that you can make us any promises that this isn't going to hurt us. And just like Barry was talking about, look at my son. He goes to a special clinic for pulmonary issues. He goes to a cardiologist. He goes to an endocrinologist. He goes to complex care at Cincinnati Children's because of all of his issues and he's going to have to breathe in whatever air pollution this creates and whatever noise. He already has a hard time concentrating. Now he's got to listen to this hum. I mean, I dare you to have someone hum in your ear 24/7 and see if it doesn't drive you nuts. And this is in my backyard. And then on top of it, directly in my backyard, about 50 feet from my back door, that's all zoned industrial too. So that noise compounds on top of the data center noise. And I don't believe this, and, and when I, when I hear you say, "Well, they'll just build it somewhere else," we're already talking to those people. We're talking to the people in the township. We've been talking Hamilton, we've been talking to Roth. Everybody's against this. And they're going to be paying attention to their city council meetings to make sure it doesn't even get to the point of selling the land to a data center. So there's no guarantee it will go down the road. And what I see is money and I see air pollution, noise pollution, upward problems, wildlife problems. We've got bald eagle nesting over there within three miles. They're protected in Ohio. Anything that would disrupt their nesting is illegal in Ohio. In fact, it can be termed a felony if there's too many of them. You know, so I'm seeing the positives and the negatives and boy, the negatives sure outweigh the positives, at least in my opinion. So I'm going to once again ask this council, would you please put it to the people and please respect the people? Because I'll tell you what, if you put it to a vote and the people vote this data center in, I'll run with it. You won't hear a complaint from me because at least they've had their say and so have I. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I, I've ran into this numerous times when I've been on council with zoning and I just want to, this is something that we've talked about a lot. Please check when you buy a house what things are zoned around you because we've had Butler County puts a backyard as a flood plain and someone can't put a pool in. And like you guys, I'm, I'm sorry and I understand and believe me, before I was here, I wouldn't know that things could be zoned like that, but that field has been zoned heavy industry for...
And we were shocked because every year we talked to the farmer and every year we watched him farm that land.
Yeah.
We had no idea that there could ever be industry back there.
Yeah. And then all of a sudden he's sold.
Right.
So that's, I mean, that's what we're facing. It's there, the farm, it's not like we're running farmers out. These farmers are selling.
But it's going all the time though, so why do you even have to keep it industrial if you didn't want it? There's all kinds of reasons to rezone, right?
Why did we have to include a data center in the terminology of the zoning for technology? We didn't. No, no one here is saying, contrary to some of the posts I, I think I've put out, I know we can't stay small forever. There is progression, but you talk about growing responsibly, okay? No one's saying, "We don't encourage business to come into Trenton. It doesn't have to be a data center with the impact that it'll have on the community." Businesses can come in here. No one protested. Did anybody protest when SHAPE moved and we kept the jobs in Trenton? No. We're protesting a data center.
I, I will, I will tell you this, no one protested and no one showed up when we moved SHAPE. And I will agree with you, but right now we're looking at downtown Trenton as a brown site from SHAPE being there to begin with. So we're looking to remediate a brown site in downtown Trenton because SHAPE was there.
What exactly is a brown site, I'm sorry?
Polluted soil.
Polluted.
Yeah. So we're, we're looking at ways that we can get grants to remediate the soil that's there. So I, I understand what everyone's saying. Here's what I, here's what I'm thinking about is that a lot right now, we're comparing a data center to a farm field. But what if we, I mean, what, what if it was compared to a fat rendering plant? What if it was, I mean, up until we did change the zoning on the land that's next to you and it could have been open mind, just they could have made it a new gravel pit. And there's absolutely nothing we can do about it being a gravel pit. And if I'm correct, Martin Marietta still owns it. So I understand what you're saying, but it would have been, we, we had a lot of discussions with Martin Marietta that they weren't happy that we changed that from being able to open mine. So we are looking out for that stuff. It's not...
Well, what recourse do you guys have if something comes in? Are you saying that anybody can come in and do anything on the land that they want?
If, so if a piece of land is zoned, so for instance, in 1990, the Marconi Farm was, originally they wanted to bring high-rise apartments in here. This was a little before my time, but you guys might know.
It was zoned for quite a few apartment buildings, yes.
So the voters came by and said they wanted to change the zoning to R2, which is a residential to setting. So years later, when it came down to it and Marconi was tired of farming, he used that R2 designation and sold it to a developer. So yes, if whoever the farmer is, if they're within the city limits or their land can support that per the zoning, they can put whatever is zoned for there without any city approval whatsoever.
And there's no way to stop it at all? You can't rezone the land? You can't do anything at all?
If we would rezone something, it's the same as like a pizza place. Everybody knows how many pizza places we have here in Trenton and we hear how we should stop them. But if we stop someone from moving into a place that it's zoned for, not only is the city liable for the lost wages of that, we individually are also liable for the lost wages. So we not only get sued as a city, we get sued as a council, individuals. So like I said, if, if something moves into a place that it's zoned as, then that's what we're facing for that. So until we change the zoning, if, if we hadn't, Martin Marietta came in there and said, "We're making this a gravel pit," they could. If, if someone were to buy that farm that was behind you from them and say, "We want to, we want to produce chlorine gas or fat render into soap," that's, that's what the zoning allows per the state.
A nuclear plant? What about a nuclear plant? About something like that?
Are we, I don't know the particulars.
There are separate regulations, not that we perceive.
Yeah, that...
But I would also note that any development on any property that is residential, commercial, industrial, subject to state or health and safety regulations in our code, which includes noise limits, which includes restrictions on the timing of those noise limits, discharge, you know, maintenance of dangerous chemicals and other items on the property, all of this is discussed in the code, just like all zoning codes have.
Well, can I ask a question? Because what I read up on on rezoning was if a business tries to come in and that business is hazardous to the city and to the people, that it can, that you can request it to be rezoned? So because you have clause to rezone so that business can't come in.
Excuse me. Right, we do, I believe we covered that last meeting, correct?
There are procedural safeguards in our code for general review of non-residential developments that would allow it.
And that's what we're talking about right here is we're telling you that we've read up on this and this is dangerous for our residents and for our city.
Is there...
So we could be rezoned to keep them from coming in.
There will be a procedure for that when, once there is a site plan. Although for Planning Commission, those discussions will take place at this meeting.
And to the nuclear that we were talking about earlier, we're not, we're not covered under that. I don't believe that's in there, but as I said before, the state of Ohio just last week said that we reserve the right to put that in there if we deem it necessary for infrastructure. So regardless of where it is, it could be, it could be in the middle of Seven Mile. A farmer could sell land in Seven Mile and if the state says this is vital to infrastructure, they could put a nuclear plant there.
Even if it's detrimental to health?
This was, so what this was, was the city said, "No, we don't want the fuel cell technology."
Kill Air Ohio.
Yes.
We'll correct that, we'll get that one right.
Yep.
Kill Air Ohio.
And the state came in and said, "No, you're going forward with it. This is necessary for infrastructure." And that was, that was the end. And that's one thing that I'm 100% against.
That's being studied right now.
Yeah, fuel cell technology, but...
So basically what the state did was they went ahead and just did whatever... So basically, what the state did was they went ahead and just did whatever they wanted to without allowing the people to have a vote on it.
They would say that they allowed, they didn't allow the city council to have a vote on this at all. Because the city council turned it down.
Wouldn't you consider that a tyrannical government? The government's supposed to be serving us, not vice versa. So if the government was willing to allow a building to go in or an infrastructure, whatever, that was detrimental to people's health, knowing this, and having statistics, facts, all of that, and still do it, doesn't that mean that they are totally not looking out for the interests of the public? And doing whatever they want to do? And inevitably, this goes back to money. Money over protection.
Sir, sir...
If it's detrimental to health, you know, like you have people who've talked about this. And if it's detrimental and the people have an issue for it, then they should be able to vote for it. That would be a democracy. Being allowed to vote for something that has detrimental health effects. Like for instance, the coke plant. That needs to be gone. It causes black lung. That is a fact. And we have that polluting everywhere. You see the lies over there.
Sir, I understand, look, I understand what you're saying. But we are the representation of the people, and number two, I'm not going to get into a debate about capitalism being a bad system.
Can I ask which side you are on? Are you Republican or Democrat?
I'm a Republican.
We're not here to discuss Ryan's political ambitions. We're here to discuss Trenton business.
Can I say one thing about that?
What?
In Trenton, we do not have to decide what you are when you are voted in. It is nonpartisan. Whether you know that or whether you did not. It is nonpartisan. You don't have to disclose what you are.
Well, it's just to show that's what Republicans are basically about. Money, 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 destroy everything.
Okay, I think we need to...
Well, inevitably, both sides are the same.
It has nothing to do with...
Okay, 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 okay. Let's, I don't want it to get... Yes, ma'am, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Carrie Lou. I just wanted to read, well, I have comments and I wanted to read this article that was in the Daily Caller. It's a couple paragraphs. "The North American Electric Reliability Corporation, NERC, reported Tuesday that winter electricity demand is increasing, especially in regions with high concentrations of artificial intelligence data centers. NERC outlined in its 2025-2026 reliability report that much of North America is at risk of failing to meet demand in extreme operating conditions. Regions loaded with energy-hungry AI data centers face heightened outage risks during intense winter weather, according to NERC. And it's that winter electricity demand is rising at the fastest rate in recent years, particularly in areas where data center development is occurring. So this is a general thing, that these data centers are increasing at a high rate. And I would just say that it's not a benefit to us to have one more of them here to make that concentration more in this area. Hamilton is fighting one right now. They're talking about putting one in there."
I think they already...
Hamilton has two of them already, ma'am.
Pardon me?
Hamilton has two of them already.
Yeah, I was...
Yes, they do.
Yeah, I was reading that, and they do, yeah. I would say as far as, you know, holding the community, people in general want to be nice. It's not easy for me to get up here and talk to you all and be oppositional. And I'd say that that's how most people are. So when you talk to somebody one-on-one, they want to be nice. You know, I can be nice with people that I disagree with. And that's just how people generally are speaking.
True.
A way to find out for sure would be to put it to a vote. Because that's an impartial thing. You're not looking somebody in the face, and that's why we have private voting, so that we don't ever feel pressure or personal, like, "Oh, how are you going to vote on this?" sort of pressure. We can vote our conscience. So that would be an impartial way to find out for sure how the community feels. We would object to a data center that's outside the boundaries of Trenton. If it was just be outside the boundaries of Trenton, I would still object to it too, because that would still be near where I live. People who stock these centers elsewhere, when there's enough outcry, these things have been made to go somewhere else.
And with the backing of their council?
I was going to say that next, that we need council to be with us. If people in general, the community, can fight these things, surely their elected representatives can do it. And that would be a good thing to have the council fight for the community. It's not good for us to have to fight with council, it'd be good to fight with. So as far as running for office, I have been voted, I am a Republican. I am pro-life. I have voted Republican all my adult life. And I'm just going to use this as an example, I'm pro-life, so for years, Republican representatives had told me, "I'm pro-life. I'm so pro-life, vote for me." When they overturned the Roe v. Wade decision, all of a sudden, people had to put their money where their mouth is. All of a sudden, it's like, whoa, well, we don't know what we can do about that. And I see a whole lot of bad action. So when you tell me that you are for local control, and you don't like how Columbus is handing down mandates in Butler County, you shared in the last meeting how Butler County could overrule you guys. I don't know how that's possible. You've had a contract. And we don't have to go into particulars here, but I just don't even know how that can be possible. I don't know how the state can do that to local communities. But if you give in on this issue, and in fact, we have so easily, it doesn't give me confidence that you would fight for us in Columbus. Because I do, being a Republican, I definitely have, I need to think about this. I would like to see you show by your action now that you would fight me in Columbus, and not just... We have so many people in the state office that just go along to get along. And I am so tired of that. I'm a pretty old person now. And I'm so tired of being betrayed by my elected representatives. So show us now that you would be a fighter for us.
Ma'am, I'd like to say one thing, and I think one of the points that you just missed on more or less, our county commissioners overruled us. Well, no, they told us to go back and renegotiate. Even though it was a binding contract, renegotiate.
How could a binding contract have to be renegotiated by a third party?
There you go. There you go.
Unfortunately, that was a contractual contract, although it affects the county, that affects Edgewood School and the city of Trenton much more. It was, since it was an enterprise zone and not a CRA, it was between the county commissioners and...
Carvana.
And even though Project 19 says that Carvana does not make 75% of their projected employment, which is 400 FTEs, Carvana shall remit all of the taxes. The commissioners have chosen to renegotiate that, shall. But that contract unfortunately was not signed between the city and Carvana, it was between the commissioners and Carvana. I assume the city staff at that point had input, but we might not want this.
Okay.
That and this federal government and the state government puts regulations on us all the time that we have no control over whatsoever. They tell us how to spend tens of thousands, if not more, of your tax dollars every year on things that we have absolutely no say in.
Well, the other thing you've mentioned, Carvana, and I'll bring that up, is they wanted the light poles higher. And I sat on the planning commission at that time. They were actually held to that standard because the light could not go even further.
Continue.
Well, their light poles got to be higher, we voted yes. But as far as the brightness coming out or anything else, they were held to our same standards. Even though they wanted it higher. And it had to shine back onto their lot. Not out that made it on Pearson Road and all that. So yeah, there is changes that has to be made all the way through that whole scenario. But they did, you know, comply with the whole thing.
Mayor, just a quick question, I was just through this, just to confirm Mr. Graff's. The City of Hamilton's had a data center since 2005. A proposed data center being discussed right now of Butts residential property. Right off Knightsbridge.
I can't hear what he's saying.
What he just said is, go ahead, if you want to say it louder.
The City of Hamilton has had its data center since 2005 on Knightsbridge. The proposed data center being discussed currently in the city, which has been referenced tonight, is Butts, two neighborhoods. Just wanted to provide that information.
So I'm not trying to interrupt, but can you tell us the size of that data center versus the size of this one going in?
I do not.
As y'all showed, this was a thousand, it was a million square feet. Is that one anywhere close to that?
I do not have those specifics.
Because my understanding, when I talked to City of Hamilton and people down there, that's a very small one compared to what we're getting. And a very small one has a whole lot less going on with it than what a very big one's going to have.
Hi, I'm Angie Markham. Thank you for letting me speak. I came to talk about something in particular, but a couple of things that I've heard, I'd like to piggyback off of before I get to that if I can. When the first gentleman was up here speaking, Mr. Perry, you mentioned that there isn't any way to get an accurate feed on this read of the data center. And you also said it's very confusing. But then you've said you're pro-people in the community voicing their opinion. As other people have mentioned here, a way to get a good feed on that is to give it to a vote. That's been mentioned several times before. The other thing I'll say, while he was speaking, you said you knew before you made this decision that this was not going to be a popular decision, but you had to make it anyway. But you're trying to convince us that we shouldn't go for a vote because it's not going to win. People would vote for the data center, but you're saying you knew that wouldn't be a popular decision. It seems kind of contradictory.
I get it, and I will tell you that there's it's a lot more on the horizon that isn't public. And knowing what I know, I didn't think there was another choice. Personally. I could have, I could have said no, yes. But there is a lot more, there's a lot more happening.
That leads perfectly into what I wanted to come to speak about. You guys put out that you want to foster transparency, communication, and community engagement. So more of us knowing what's going on and behind there. Allowing the information to be shared with people about where we are with plans, what studies have been done, what studies haven't been done. Putting all of that information out there for everyone to see and be able to weigh in on, and get that community engagement. Again, brings back to the idea of, let's be open, let's be transparent, let's put that all out there, and then let's put it to a vote. Let the people be heard on a ballot about whether they are for this or against this. And I'm all for, I hear what you're saying about there's the tax dollars, there's the jobs that are coming, there are all of those things that are going to be a benefit to us. Put that information out there. Also allow the information, the evidence-based information that people are saying about what's happening with, you know, electricity prices, what's happening to water quality, what's happening to people's health with noise, all of that stuff. Put it all out there, let people make an informed decision. I think that's the way you decide whether it's popular or not, how you get past the "it's confusing," how you get past "it's hard to get a read on it." You open all of that up, including, and again, I understand there may be things you can't share about what's coming down the road.
Legally, yes, I can.
But giving people as much understanding as they can of where you're coming from and what your thinking is. Putting all of that out there and then put it to a vote.
And I will say that that is one thing, I hate to say it positive, because, but that is one thing here, because like I've said before, I understand that it's probably a two-way street here as far as communication, because, I mean, I've heard numerous times that we hid this from the public, but this has been... I mean, we voted on to go into an agreement with them well over a year ago.
Yeah.
In a public meeting. And in fact, it was put on there to read once at that public meeting, and I said, "No, this is really important. We need to read this twice." And nobody was there for either of them. It was on Facebook, nobody, nobody said anything. So yes, we need to foster better communication between us and the citizens, because, I mean, I'm going to be honest with you, if we're sitting up here and you discuss this and going into a purchase agreement and you say, "I don't want to read it once, let's read it twice." You hear nothing from the community, you're having people watch you on Facebook, and nobody says a word to you, and a year goes by. And then all of a sudden, you read it again twice, and no one shows up to either of those meetings or says anything to you. And then after it's all over with, you get a public outcry. It's very hard. You see what I'm saying? It's very hard for us, and this is something that all of us have to get better at. And maybe the only positive is now we're actually hearing what people would like. I mean, I get calls all the time from people, and they're calling me to dispel rumors. I mean, I've heard everything from, what? That only the fire and the police are going to be allowed in the YMCA to it's not going to have a pool, it's only going to have an outdoor pool, it's only going to have an indoor pool, and I thank everyone that calls me and asks me, whether it's, "Are we getting Wendy's?" That calls me and asks me those questions. And yes, in the future, we will do a better job communicating. I promise you that, as long as I'm here, we'll do a better job communicating. But it is, I will say it is frustrating for the council, because we weren't trying to hide anything, and it was... It was the same, we followed the same thing as when we sold to Carvana, when we sold to SHAPE Corp., it was the same process. In fact, I think we read to put SHAPE Corp. on there less than what we did for this data center. And a lot less time went by. We bought the property, and I think within a month, we had sold to SHAPE already. And we didn't, there was no, there was nobody at any of those meetings. I mean, to be honest with you, Kenny, how many times have you came in here to a meeting and there's nobody?
Very, a lot, a lot. Here's what I'm hearing tonight. We have 14,000 people in Trenton. Only 300 people in Trenton, tall, are opposing it. Most of them are sitting in their home in their pajamas, on their phone. Do they really care, or are they just bored and want to jump on the bandwagon?
I'm not.
So what I'm saying is, 300 people is not even close to a majority. Now, 20,000 people showed up here? I think there'd be a different reaction.
I'm not, I...
Well, I'm sorry.
I'm not, I'm not going to...
What 300 people is not?
I'm not... I'm not, I'm not going down that road. No, I'm not, no, no.
Also remember this. This is all around town. Everybody's talking about this. This is all around town. You guys have done a great job, everybody's done a great job talking about it. But yet, you only have 300 people that are opposed.
It was just a small, little town.
So again, I would say that the way you handle that is to actually put it on the ballot. Let people vote for it, because that will get it out there, people that go vote on a regular basis. I appreciate that you acknowledge that communication obviously wasn't effective before.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, I've heard somebody say that we can find out about every community picnic, or this, that, or the other, but we rarely hear about these sorts of things. So, you know, maybe learning from how we're communicating effectively about those festivals and those parties and those sorts of things, and apply it to some of these things that also are very important. If I may say, just one more thing. It kind of seems like there's a consensus even amongst you guys that there are some problems with this. It's part of the reason that we're making the argument or the statement that we'd rather be in the city limits where we're going to at least benefit from the tax dollars, even if it's not in the limits or in the industrial park, if I'm saying that incorrectly. We get the negatives, but not the benefits of it. Well, so if we have it here, if we're taking it into our city, we're negatively impacting all of our neighbors, our neighboring communities that are not benefiting from it. So maybe instead of taking this approach of, well, better us getting money and being beat up by it, than just being beat up by it, how about we all band together and fight against data centers? against data centers in general?
I, I wish that were the case, but we're seeing like, in Hamilton already having two. I do know right across the, the bridge here, if I'm, if I'm correct, there's a large-scale Bitcoin mining operation that happens on Ingalls Corner, that no one knows is there, but that's a massive take on it. That's, in an ideal world, I get what you're saying.
I guess I look at it one way, we're all the problem. Everyone up here and everyone, because of these. You watch Netflix, that's the problem. That's why the data centers are expanding.
I would say it's more the, the cyber, the cryptocurrency and the, the chat GPT, the, you know, the AI, those sorts of things. I personally refuse to use those things. I, I stay away from them because I am, I don't want to perpetuate that, because like you said, if we, if we use it, we're part of the problem.
Exactly.
So I choose not to.
The more we use it, the more problem we are.
And I.
It really is. I mean, look at the bigger picture of everything. Like you said, the AI is coming still. And I brought it up to the school systems, you've got to be prepared for this, coming to the school system, the G, what is it, ChatGPT and all that.
They're already seeing it.
Oh, exactly.
I used to be a high school math teacher, they're already seeing it.
Oh, exactly, that's what I'm saying. But I guess, way I look at it, and I'll tell you where I stand on this, is that being in the city limits and instead of the township medicine, number one, we will gain as the city tax dollars off of this. If it's in township, they have no tax dollars, they're not taxed. I'm really surprised they came.
But they're still detrimental from the.
I understand that.
Right.
But we can control it more in the city versus the next buildup in the township.
So like, like Miller, we talk about traffic all the time, and Miller has, what, 600 trucks a day?
Yeah.
That go in and out?
We're not retired, we have 600 semis a day. Traders, I guess it would be called.
They contribute to our traffic problem immensely. They're on our roads all the time, and we have no control over anything that Miller does, and we receive zero tax dollars from Miller.
St. Clair Township, they'll receive tax dollars.
So that's where, that's where we were looking at it, that's where we're looking. But on a personal note, I would love to have a discussion about the AI and everything. I, I listen to a whole lot of podcasts and things about that, so if you'd like to have a discussion about it, I'm open to it.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Could I say something real quick? I just didn't want to get back in.
Oh, absolutely.
Really, you know, we keep talking about how nobody was here when you guys read all of this. Honestly, if I was part of the city council, I would take that as a compliment, because when these chairs are empty, that means that people trust you, that they're okay with what you're doing. When these seats get full, that's when there's a problem. Do you know what I mean?
No, no, and I, and that was, to be, no, no, to be honest with you, and that, that was exactly what you're saying. So we enter into the purchase agreement, and for a year, there is nothing. It was public knowledge, we were in a purchase agreement with them for a year.
And even before that, when, when the property was, when we first purchased the property that Carvana and RV Nation and all them are on, what we heard at that time, when we annexed it into the city, it automatically comes into the city's own residential per our charter. Any, any annexed property comes in as residential.
I think we changed.
And then we have to change that, that zoning. When we did that, what we were hearing at that time, everybody was thrilled to death we made it industrial, because they didn't want 1,000 houses built on it. Yeah? But yet we, we have the public hearings, and nobody shows up to, to speak for or against either one, to be honest.
Well, and I was negligent with that. But like I said, the reason I was, is I've lived here almost 25 years, and everything's always been run so smoothly, and our council has always been very tight. I didn't feel like I had to constantly be here watching what you guys were doing, is my point. I, I felt confident in you.
There's also a flip side of that coin. People won't come in, don't really care about the city until something happens close to them.
Yeah.
There's also a flip side.
Oh, I.
How hard is it?
I'm not.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that to you, I'm just saying in general, do people really care about the city if they can't at least once a month, take time, to come and see what's going on in the city they love? But yet, if something happens close to them, they don't mind it, then okay, let's all go in there and race and camp. So there's a flip side of that coin.
What you just brought up is exactly right, Al, at the school district, I've been going for two and a half years. We may have more, we may have five in the audience. Are you guys all, everyone happy with the school system?
No, I took my son out, he's homeschooled, because kids.
There's a meeting once a month out there, that's the point I'm trying to make, get involved. You've got to get involved, you've got to know what's going on.
In my sense, there's a lot of specifics.
No, 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 I get, we get that.
No, I understand that totally, but you got to get involved all the way around.
Okay, one, one last, and then we got to break right before our council meeting as well.
Hold on, can I say something quick? Yeah, okay, I want to take part, I want, y'all to take part, plane. My mother-in-law was in bed, bed bound for almost two years. We couldn't, my wife and I couldn't get out of the house, we had to take care of her. Okay, my bad for not coming, okay? But I've looked all over the City of Trenton government website, I've looked over the things that have been posted everywhere. We usually see the franks with the fuzz, we usually see the fireworks and stuff down here at the park. But how many times was it listed on those sites about a data center being proposed, or Carvana being proposed, or moving? Shay, how many times was that listed on those websites?
No, no, and I understand what you're saying, and, no, no, and I, I, I understand 100% what you're saying, and like I said, if this is what we learn from it, but exactly like you said, we, we put Carvana, and we didn't put anything out, and there was no thing on Carvana. Shape is a brown site now in downtown. But when we moved Shape, we moved that in a real hurry, and we did it to an empty council building, and we're thanked because we kept the jobs here. So I under, I understand that there's a responsibility that the city has as well, that at the end of the day, yes, we will do a lot better job communicating, that's why we're doing the round tables, where you can come and you can speak, and it's not a structured meeting, it's not on Facebook, you can come and talk. I mean, I'm, like I said the last meeting, everyone in Trenton has my phone number now. If you have Trenton Talk, you have my phone number, and if you don't have it, just let me know, and I'll let you have it. I field calls all the time.
Can I close out with one last?
Yeah.
I'm going to read you a statement. My mission has always been to lead with integrity, listen with purpose, and deliver real results for our community. Where did that come from? Sir, that's your mayor's statement.
I hope I said it.
Any representatives?
Yeah.
That's from your website.
Yeah.
Okay? What concerned me about that is the term real results, because I'm questioning if it's at any cost. If you're trying to lead your mayorship for a larger role, and it, it is an issue for us here, because if we are still feeling like these are damaging decisions that you're making, and you're advocating for a larger role, then again, I, I have to remind you that results don't equal progress. Okay, progress should benefit the people.
But also, you can always get what you want, so that don't, that don't change somebody. You're right.
Okay, we're going to, number one.
Let me make one, one more statement. I, I appreciate all of you coming tonight and expressing your opinions, Kay. I'm always interested in hearing people's opinions.
Okay, let's.
And I'll give them my opinion, okay? They may not agree with my opinion, but I'll always be honest with you, okay?
You've been a lot more quiet on Facebook. I've been looking.
I've been on there.
You had a busy week or something?
Well, yeah, actually I did. But what I would ask is, everyone here tonight has been pretty respectful, and we appreciate that. I think that's one of my biggest problems with this whole thing, is the people that get on Facebook and call us pedophiles, call us thieves, say we need to be tarred and feathered, that's ridiculous. We're not saying that about you people that have a different opinion than us, and I will just ask that people be respectful to this council.
And I think you saw my post on Trenton Talk, right? I said that exact same thing.
Yeah, I've seen some that did.
You desperately can't respect each other, and that is ridiculous.
We can agree to disagree.
All right. Well, we are going to take a break from work session, but luckily, we'll be back in one minute for the council meeting, so thank you.